Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Monday, November 27. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Mrs. Lavelle, can we please have a roll call?
Yes, Mrs. Castelli, Mr. Doring.
Here.
Mrs. Passaretti.
Here.
Mrs. Raccio.
Here.
Dr. Reed.
Here.
Ms. Regan. Dr. Roscoe. Mr. Ross. Mr. Vado.
Here.
Six members present and voting.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will move on to item number four, our Student Board Representatives. Haley, would you like to come up and fill us in as to what's happening at Lyman Hall? Welcome.
Hi. So, on the first was the Free Application Day for in-state schools. We all, from the first to the third, was the Advanced Placement Exam Registration. On the second, the quarter, the first quarter ended of the year, and grades were, like, due. The sixth was, we had the Powderpuff Faculty Game, which students love to participate in every year. The seventh was Election Day, so we had no school. The tenth was Veterans Day, so no school again. And we also participated in Community Day, where all the, like, people got together and got to rake leaves for the elderly in our community. The thirteenth, the report cards were due for Quarter One. The fourteenth was Picture Retake Day, and there was an after-school application workshop in the Guidance Counseling Office. And then, the Lyman Hall volleyball team had a game versus the staff. The fifteenth was an Advisory Day, so we followed a special bell schedule. The nineteenth, we had the Lyman Hall PTAC Day in the Library Media Center. The seventeenth was our Homecoming Dance. The eighteenth, we had the Music Parents Craft Fair, which was over the weekend. The twenty-first, we had another after-school application workshop in the School Counseling Office. The twenty-second was a two-hour early release day, as well as our Powderpuff Game during, versus Sheen, at Sheen. The twenty-third was Thanksgiving, so we had no school. And it was also the Carini Bowl Game versus Sheen, which was held at Lyman Hall. And the twenty-fourth, we had no school because of Thanksgiving break. The twenty-eighth through the thirtieth is the ASTE Winter Plant Sale at our school. The twenty-ninth, we are going to the Oakdale Theater for Chris Heron's presentation, as well as with Sheen. And the thirtieth is the On-Site College Decision Day and the ASTE Open House.
That is a busy month, and I am looking forward to hearing next month what you think of the presentation on Wednesday. So, thank you for sharing everything. Next, we have Leah and Emma from Sheen. Welcome, ladies.
Thank you for having us again tonight. First, although he's not here, on behalf of Sheen, I would like to thank Ray Ross for taking so many wonderful pictures of our Powderpuff Experience, and to everyone who made the game possible. It was a fantastic experience, and while it's over, now we are looking forward to many more fun events at Sheen this upcoming month. Today, our canned food drive, run by our Student Council, began, and it will run through December 4th. The class who donates the most cans will win the most spirit points. For the first part of the school year, the seniors won the most spirit points. And now, we have a Wooden Titan Sword with the class of 2024 inscribed on it, and it's hanging in our senior court. Our other reward is we will watch a Christmas movie during Office 30 Time Block as a reward for showing most school spirit. This Wednesday, Sheen and other schools in our district will take a field trip to the Oakdale to learn from Mr. Chris Heron, as she said before. On December 5th, Sheen will have a parent-teacher conference. On the sixth, we will have our FAFSA workshop to help students applying to college for how to get ready financially. On the eighth, Sheen's Interact Club, Toys for Tots Drive will end, and we will deliver the presents students donated to the organization. On the eleventh, we will reach the halfway point through Term Two of this school year. And we are happy to announce that our school's football team has made it to the playoffs. And additionally, we are very excited that tryouts and practice for our winter sports have begun.
Thank you.
Um, this November, as Leah said, it was a very exciting November at Sheen, not only because the trophy stayed on the West Side, but because the class truly came together, and I've never felt, like, so much school spirit, especially being a senior. But for the rest of December, on the twentieth, we have our winter concert. On the eighteenth, the SAD Door Decorating Ends, which is our Students Against Destructive Decisions Club. On December 20th, we have an Office 30 Bell Schedule. On the twenty-first, we have our second Sheen Blood Drive of the Year, which always is a success and is fun to see and do. And then, on the twenty-second, we have a half-day schedule. And the twenty-fifth through January 1st is our December Vacation. Thank you for having us again.
Thank you. It seems kind of odd, like, we're already talking about winter sports, and, I don't know, we just changed the clocks back. It's just, time is flying. Did it really? Hockey started. Wow. Okay. We don't have presentation and awards, and I am remiss because I wanted to make an amendment to the agenda, which I should have started at the beginning of the meeting. But let me do it now, before the public comment, because if there's people who are going to speak at public comment, and then we go into, later we go into executive session, I don't want you to wait through executive session not knowing that the amend, that there's been an amendment to the agenda. I'm going to make a motion to remove item 13.1, the discussion of certified, non-certified substitute coverage from tonight's agenda. Can I have a second?
Second.
And now, discussion on that. The reason that I'm removing that is we have several board members who had, well, one that had a family emergency who actually put it on tonight's agenda and is not going to be able to speak to it, and two other board members that were not able to attend. Given the magnitude of the conversation, I'd like to have as many people involved on the board as possible to discuss it. So, we're going to move that item to Monday's instructional meeting, and hopefully, we'll have more board members who can speak to it at that time. So, hearing that discussion, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so 13.1 will be taken off tonight's agenda. We'll see it again on Monday. And my apologies for not doing that at the beginning of the meeting. At this time, I will move on to item number six and open up the meeting for public comment. And I will start by reading our public comment statement. "The Board welcomes public comment as it represents an opportunity for members of the public to express their views to the Board on matters within the Board's authority. We ask that all speakers maintain appropriate standards of decorum. No boisterous or inappropriate conduct is permitted. We expect comments to be respectful and civil in tone, and we do not permit name-calling, raised voices, or vulgarity. All comments must be directed to the Board and not any individual board member or individual member of administration. Although the Board values and appreciates the input of public comment, the Board and Administration will not be responding to questions or engaging with dialogue during the public comment period. Instead, the Board and the Administration will determine whether, when, and how to address questions that arise during the public comment period, and whether to address the issues on the agenda of a future meeting." And with that, do we have any public comment for this evening? Please come up to the mic and state your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Tim Kanzler. I live at 41 Hints Drive, west side of town. I have three children in the system, elementary, middle, and high school. And I'm also instrumental music teacher at Pond Hill. I've been teaching at Pond Hill for 20 years. And I was going to comment on the substitute issue, actually. So, our music program has suffered a number of setbacks over the last 10 years, I'd say, starting with the six-day rotation that we went to. When I first started teaching here, we had lessons once a week, instrumental lessons once a week, which was about four times a month for our students. When we went to the six-day schedule, now it's three times a month, which adds up, you know, the students get 10 less lessons a month. So, I see my students for a total of an hour and a half a month. On top of that, then we had COVID. We had a lot of setbacks from COVID. Our numbers have declined, and in the system, we're trying to build those numbers back up. Past COVID, last year, we had some field trips canceled for the middle schools. Their trip to Six Flags, I think, was canceled. These were big bonding issues for the music students and were served as an important tool to keep the kids interested in remaining in band and orchestra. And this year, unfortunately, we understand the gravity of the substitute situation, the lack of subs, but we've been called on to sub in the classroom. I've been pulled four times this year. And we are more than willing to help out, cover classes when we can during open periods that we have, when we're not with students. But I've been, had to sub and cancel my instrumental lessons to sub in a third-grade classroom four times. The vocal music teacher at Moses Y. Beach was pulled for an entire day. Her vocal music classes were canceled for an entire day, and she had to sub in a second-grade classroom. And as a performing art, where we're expected to put our students on stage, it's very difficult to prepare our students for concerts when we're being pulled to sub. And so, like I said, we're more than willing to help out when we have open times. What we're asking for is maybe a mandate where music teachers are not required to sub, pulled from their classrooms to sub. So, you know, if we have open blocks and they need someone to fill in, we're more than happy to help out. But canceling our lessons makes it really difficult to prepare our students when we only already see them three times a month for music lessons. And I probably don't want to tell you the great impact that music has on our students. Achievement in math, there's so much research of the impact that music has on kids. It's not just an extracurricular fun activity. It means a lot to our students beyond just the academics. And we, the music department, really feels strongly. We're trying to build our music program back into a quality program, and we need a lot of students to do that, especially when we get to the high school level. And if we're cutting things down at the elementary level, it's just, the interest is going to drop from the students, and they're not going to continue into middle school and then high school. So, we're trying to get as much time with the kids as humanly possible, so we can prepare them to go on to middle school and high school. So, just as a request from the music department, I know the sub issue is really, really tricky, but we're trying to just get it that maybe we aren't pulled from our instructional time to service subs. So, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I have to run. I have to go coach basketball at DAG. But thank you again.
Thank you. Sure, did you, could you wait for one clarifying question?
I just want a clarification on, you're saying that the new schedule has reduced the number of times you see the children? This new, no, that's middle school. Sorry.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about the six-day elementary schedule, which goes back a while.
Say it again?
The six-day elementary rotating schedule. Yeah, that's what I was referring to.
So, it's, you said, three times a month?
Yeah.
You see these kids?
For a half hour.
For a half hour?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
My name is Susan Rhodes. I am a bilingual teacher at Cook Hill School. I've been teaching in Wallingford for 21 years.
Susan, could you also give us your address for the record?
Yes, 37 Hanover Street. My husband went to Sheen, my child went to Sheen, my stepkids went to Sheen. I have a lot invested in the town. And I spoke at the Zoom meeting we had, but I could go on and on, but I'm not going to. I'm going to read something tonight from my colleague, Anne Portier. She lives at 121 Simpson Avenue. She's been a librarian at Moses Y. Beach for over 20 years. Many of you probably know her. This is from Anne. "We do have a serious situation at this time regarding the shortage of subs in our schools. I can speak from the perspective of a special area teacher at the pre-K to 2 level. It is important to know that the teachers who are deemed available for subbing are also legally mandated special education teachers or bilingual education service teachers or intervention teachers who provide reading and math intervention, EL teachers who support multilingual students, and the special area teachers who are supporting curriculum in the special areas. These professionals work hard each day to best serve our students. When they are pulled to sub, the students with the greatest needs are missing out. Students struggling in reading or math, students who must navigate the school day with limited proficiency in English, students who truly thrive in the special area settings when they have a chance to shine in ways that they may not be able to in the classroom. Classroom teachers are losing much-needed preparation time when special area classes are canceled as well. Teacher absences are a reality that must be acknowledged. Teachers get sick, have family who get sick, or have life obligations that occasionally require them to miss school. We must do something to address the shortage. Two neighboring towns, Durham and Cheshire, pay a daily rate of $120 and $125 per day, compared with $100 in Wallingford. People in the area choosing a district to sub in may choose Wallingford if we were to offer a rate of pay more comparable to our neighboring districts. We no longer have building interns at the pre-K to 2 level. One built, uh, most of the K-2 schools have one building sub. One building sub is not enough at the elementary level. This is the first year we do not have an intern along with a building sub, and on the majority of days, it is not enough. We also have the benefit of having many paras in the building, many who are quite able and willing to sub when the classroom teacher is absent. While certainly not ideal, allowing the paras to sub over the last two years was crucial to allowing our school days to proceed as close to normal as possible in case of a teacher's absence while not having a sub available. This has always been voluntary. If the para is not comfortable with subbing, they do not have to. However, classroom paras chose to sub on over 100 occasions in our building last year. This was at Moses Y. Beach. That makes a big difference in the equality, in the quality of education offered at our building. Our paras know the students, know the routines, are skilled at managing a classroom, are very capable, and can keep the class together instead of being split. A split class is a lost day for everyone, as the normal routine cannot go on for the students or for the teachers taking on extra kids. In addition, many students are upset by this change in routine and leaving the known security of their classroom. These are young students having their first school experiences, and it is a big adjustment. The extra sub pay for paras is more than well-deserved, is the money the district would pay anyway to a sub, and offers the best chance at a typical school day for our students in the case of a teacher's absence. Please strongly consider this possibility, if only for the pre-K to 2 buildings, which have no interns, many paras, and students as young as two years old, who need the consistency of their typical school day. Thank you for your time, consideration, and serious attention to making the needs of our students and the quality of our educational programs the highest priority in Wallingford."
Thank you. Any other public comment?
So much shorter than you. Anna O'Brien, Nine Park Lane. While I still have it on my mind, I just want to let you know that my son goes to Pond Hill School, and Tim Kanzler is his drum teacher. My son, who has struggled in school until last year, when we fought hard, we, as in his whole school team, including his third-grade teacher who's behind me, to get him tested for dyslexia. And he is now, since then, thriving and doing amazing. But I have to say that drums is something that he feels confident in, and he has missed drums because Mr. Kanzler has had to sub, and like he said, is three times a month. So, when he's had to miss it, then it's maybe twice or once. And I also want to say, to piggyback on what Susan said about our school, I speak from Cook Hill School. I'm the librarian there. I've been there 10 years. And we do have little ones as young as not even three. And today, I watched a kindergartner cry for 20 minutes because she was scared to be split up, to have to go to another classroom. It is a huge deal for our little ones. I know the older ones maybe can handle it better, but I'm just speaking from my experience. And what I am about to read is something, it's a collective from a lot of my staff members, my colleagues that I work with, staff members of Cook Hill School. "I'd like to speak on behalf of the teachers with whom I work with and hundreds of students. They are collectively responsible for educating. Every day that one of them is pulled out of their roles in order to do the job of a substitute teacher is a day of scramble, stress, disappointment, and ultimately, an increase in workload for many of the adults who now must execute the job of a colleague while still being held accountable for their own required work and responsibilities. The substitute shortage is a daily concern that creates a ripple of disruption within our elementary school buildings. I have heard everyone talk at great lengths in this district over the past few months about the rising mental health concerns of our students. Our youngest learners are most susceptible to the reverberations of disjointed days if multiple people are being pulled to cover classes, uncertain schedules, if students are being split among other classrooms, and additional anxiety for many who have entered school expecting the structure of the school day they are accustomed to, only to be met with variables they may not be equipped to handle. If there's anything we know about early childhood education, it is that consistency, structure, and predictability is the foundation for which social-emotional learning must be built. Additionally, when stress compounds on the adults who are in constant flux waiting to hear if they will be pulled out of their rooms to sub or taking on additional students in their classrooms because there is no coverage available, we are exasperating the people who must be operating at full capacity to support the dynamic and personalized learning needs of all our students. I have seen teachers step up, step in, and be the heroes our students need. However, we need to consider how this will begin to pile up and affect the most important asset we have in this school district, our teachers. They deserve better so that our students can get the best. In my opinion, it is, it is dangerous for us to allow this level of disruption to our students' education to continue. An example of this disruption can be better understood if we take a moment to consider what is now happening in our schools. We are using interventionist bilingual and multilingual teachers as substitutes. If we continue to do this, we have conceded to taking away critical teaching and learning opportunities for our most at-risk population of students. This is extremely concerning and will surely have an impact on our students' learning outcomes. Many students have already had and may continue to experience severe interruptions to their learning, missing multiple days of intervention services, which exist solely to accelerate learning and prepare students for what's next in their grade-level curriculums. When this happens to coaches, they must abandon their day of coaching responsibilities. This can have a ripple effect that is often unmanageable and sometimes irreversible. If they have goal-setting meetings scheduled, lessons to deliver, data teams to facilitate, or other professional learning activities to plan, it may not be as simple as, well, they'll just do that tomorrow then. The same ripple effect occurs when the special area teachers are called to sub. The amount of time, energy, and coordination that can be undone simply because we have not effectively recruited, hired, or compensated those individuals who are, in my opinion, integral to the operation of our schools is really concerning. We are curious as to why the MOU with the parent union is not approved this year. Having someone who works directly with that class acts as the substitute, acting as a substitute teacher was wonderful. The days went so smoothly for our students when their classroom teacher had to be out. As a district, we rose above and did everything we could during the pandemic to fully staff-train and provide resources aimed at counteracting the loss, the lost learning time we, as a global society, had absolutely no control over. Our response to this personnel crisis should be no different, but sadly, it feels like it has been. We must invest more time and energy into rectifying this problem and better support those people who are already working tirelessly to do multiple jobs to support our students. Thank you for listening and for putting our students first."
Thank you. Any other public comment this evening? Seeing none. Sure, Dr. Reed, a clarifying question? Of us. Okay.
So, we're moving this to Monday, where we'll discuss it as a board, and we'll be able to ask questions of Central Office, and they'll have information for us in regards to the concerns. Right, correct?
We will have it as the same agenda item on Monday.
Okay.
Anybody else? Sorry, Mr. Doring, just hit me on that side. You're the only one over there, if I miss you. That's it? Okay. We will close public comment and move on to the consent agenda. I will make a motion to approve items 7.1 through 7.17 on the consent agenda. Can I have a second? First and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. We do not have any items removed from the consent agenda this evening. So, now we are on to correspondence. Dr. Roscoe.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Raccio. We have quite a few pieces of correspondence tonight. So, the first one was sent in from the principals from our elementary schools for the donation of miscellaneous school supplies. And this was from the Democratic Town Committee, specifically Sandy Stork. So, thank you so much for the donation of these school supplies, which valued $1,300. And this was for the teachers and students, grades preschool through five. So, thank you so much. I'm sure all of that will be put to really great use. Our next piece of correspondence was submitted from the principals, grades three through five schools. And this is a thank you to the Rotary of Wallingford, care of Lori Cook-Mara. This is for dictionaries and the Sorai for students in grades three through five. And the value was $3,256. Amazing. And now, I have some thank you notes. This is with sincere thanks. Board of Ed members, thank you for the beautiful flowers, and thinking of me during my family's loss, sincerely, Tammy. So, we are so sorry, and I hope it brought a little brightness to a cloudy time. Our next thank you note reads, "Dear Board of Education and Central Office Staff Members, thank you so much for your recent donation of the book, Playtime for Restless Rascals, in honor of Moses Y. Beach Teacher of the Year, Jamie Murphy. This joyful tribute to the importance of play for young children is so fitting for Jamie as a preschool four teacher. The story will be enjoyed by our students and staff for years to come. Your support of our library is truly appreciated. Sincerely, Anne Portier, Moses Y. Beach School Librarian." And the last one, which came with a beautiful photocopied image, which will be talked about in this thank you note. "Dear Danielle and Board of Education Members, thank you so very much for the beautiful flowers you sent to my mother's service. I enjoyed them for weeks. They were gorgeous. Your thoughtful gesture was deeply appreciated by my family. I am so thankful for the opportunity that I was given to retire and spend this past year with my mother as we were able to keep her home at her house along the Kennebec River. The sunrise on the front of this card was the photo taken just minutes from her passing. The back of the card shows the two eagles and a seal who were laying waiting on the ledge the prior day. We were blessed to know that this, excuse me, we were blessed and know that this was a privilege. Thank you for your thoughts, cards, and prayers. I miss my Wallingford family. With love, Christine." That was beautiful. And that is all I have for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Roscoe. Moving on to our committee reports. We do not have an ACES representative tonight, so we will not have an ACES update. System-wide PTAC, I do not believe they're, oh, I'm sorry, you want to talk about the Parent Choice Awards. I'm thinking there was no meeting, but there was no meeting for a very important reason.
There wasn't, because we were at a lovely event last week to celebrate the Parent Choice Awards. So many staff members of Wallingford Public Schools were nominated by our families and guardians out there in the community. And it was really just a lovely event to be together as a, as a school district and community to celebrate the dedication and unwavering support of our staff. So, it was a great reason not to have a meeting, and I think everyone thoroughly enjoyed themselves. And we have our next scheduled meeting for January at 6:00 PM. And it is on the, just one moment. 16th, at 6 o'clock, virtual.
That is wonderful. Thank you so much. And the Parent Choice Awards have really become quite the staple of PTAC and something very special and near and dear to Wallingford and very unique to our district, not anything like that across the entire state. So, it is definitely an evening to celebrate. Next, we have Special Education PTAC. Good evening, Mrs. Turner.
Good evening. So, next week, 17th of July.
So next week, Wednesday, from 6 to 8, we have Ms. E. Wrigley from the Connecticut State Department of Education coming to speak to parents regarding secondary transition planning, and that is for all parents of middle-school and high-school students about what's life after high school and how to start planning as early as possible. And that's all we have.
And I have served on some transition task force with Mrs. Wrigley, and she is a phenomenal resource in her depth of knowledge. I don't think I've ever heard somebody stump her with a question, so that's a wonderful resource for parents and district to have, so thank you for arranging that. And next on our agenda, we have Food Service Strategic Planning, which I believe from Mr. Doring, there was no meeting?
No meeting, that was correct.
Okay. And Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, Dr. Thompson.
Hold on. Sorry. Sorry. Food Services, Mr. Bondi wanted me to just share that I believe the meeting is on Wednesday, I believe there's a meeting this coming Wednesday, correct?
It's this Wednesday.
Okay, so he just wanted me to share that, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, thank you.
I was jumping the gun there. Dr. Thompson, was there a meeting for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion? No. Okay, no meeting. I do want, for the Cabe Report, I want to thank the board members, both Mr. Doring and Mr. Vado, went to the Cabe Conference, and I don't know if either one of you would like to share anything about the conference and your experience, or Superintendent Belizzi, you spent the day at Cabe as well on the 16th.
Yes, it was a lovely day, and I'm glad. I thank Mr. Doring and Mr. Vado for joining me. It was a nice opportunity to attend some breakout sessions and learn some things that are happening across the state, and a nice opportunity for us to kind of chat and meet other people, other superintendents from around the state as well. So it was a very nice day, informative, we got to attend different sessions and learn various things from brushing up on expulsions and some new legislation that's out there, so it was a great day, so I'm glad they were both able to join for the day.
Thank you. I've always, I was sad that I had a conflict this year, I've always enjoyed those conferences. It's always interesting and helpful to hear that other boards have the same issues that we have and same concerns and struggles, so I'm glad that there was representation. Thank you all for attending. There was no old business on this evening's agenda, so at this time, I will move on to item number 12, which is our executive session, and I will entertain a motion to go into executive session. I entertained, you were first.
Sorry.
First, and I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Doring is second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are now in executive session. Welcome back. Looking at our agenda, our next item is the Instructional Committee, which is item number 13. We do not have any items under instruction this evening. Moving on to the Operations Committee, in the absence of board members, Mrs. Regan and Mrs. Castelli, I've asked Mr. Barone to give the update this evening.
Thank you. We had our Operations Committee meeting, and at the meeting, we reported a surplus of $762,000, that was our projected surplus for the November meeting. We also discussed the rental of a boiler for Pond Hill, and we are in the process of getting that procured, and we believe it's going to be in the middle of next month. And then, on the Food Service side, the Food Service Department reported a profit of $54,000 for the month of October, and they also reported there were no complaints in the improvement opportunity log, and also, Mr. Bondi provided his plan for the excess operating cost spending. And then, the last item was, we had our facilities update for the meeting.
Excellent, thank you very much, Mr. Barone. Next, we are on to our administrative update, Superintendent Belizzi.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone had a lovely Thanksgiving and enjoyed the long weekend. Just a few things, I know we talked about, a lot of things, we talked about the Parent Choice Awards, which I just wanted to come in briefly, they were lovely. It was so nice to see so many of our staff be recognized, and I think they all really enjoyed the event, so I just wanted to just say what a lovely event it was. And the System-wide PTAC Committee did a beautiful job putting the whole thing together, they really did. So, we at Central Office last Wednesday did get to attend some of the Powderpuff game, and we really enjoyed that, it was a lot of fun, and the weather was really nice, so we appreciated being on the new track and turf there, it looks beautiful, and it was a great game, so we really enjoyed it, and we were glad we got to go. There is one thing before I pass it on to Mrs. Latour and then to Mrs. Turner, that I just wanted to share regarding the new entry age for kindergarten. Just wanted to highlight that we are working at Central Office regarding sending out some more information and some more detailed information to all the families. The legislation did change for the entry age for kindergarten, that students need to be five by September 1st at the start of the 24-25 school year. There is a process where we can assess students, if there are parents that wish to seek having a, you know, a waiver for their children because their birthday is after September 1st, so we are working on the details of what that assessment will be, giving families that information about dates when we'll be doing the screening and location, and so we'll be sure to get that out very shortly to all of our families. So just wanted to remind everyone of that and that we are working on that component. I am going to pass it on to Mrs. Latour, who is going to talk about some updates on the reading waiver.
Before you pass it on, Mr. Vado has a question.
On the waiver, you said you're going to give parents, what information are you going to give the parents? That there is such a thing as a waiver?
Correct.
But not?
Correct, that there's such a thing...
What will be assessed? Would you tell them, we're going to assess this, this, and this?
No.
No.
So, what we're assessing is just to make sure that it's developmentally appropriate. So we will use assessments to determine that, provide them with the results after the assessment, and give them a recommendation based on the assessment. And that's for stu, only for the students that miss that deadline of September 1st. So that will be information, the information we're going to provide is what the legislation says, remind everybody of that.
And that's it.
And the dates and the times of the location for the screening and how they can sign up for that.
Okay, just want to clarify that, thank you.
So just a quick update, as you recall, back in October, the district participated in our one-to-one interview with the consulting company that the Connecticut State Department of Education employed to read all of the waivers for the right-to-read legislation. It is anticipated that the district will receive its decision this week, so hopefully by Friday's weekly update, I'll have the email with their answer. Either way, we're hoping, obviously, to be successful in that our curriculum will remain intact. If we're not, we have, as you recall, we screened every program back last fall, and we will proceed with adjusting our curriculum as needed, and it also will enable us, our ARPA right-to-read grant that Wallingford Public Schools received is due at the end of this month, so it will help us fill out that grant in a way that provides the financial support necessary, either in program materials, teacher professional development, or screening material information. The district did receive $196,000 in that grant, to be spent, $196,000. So we will be guided by whatever decision comes down this week from the state. Mr. Vado? I wouldn't expect anything less.
Now, let me think about my question. If we don't get the waiver? Are you anticipating, unless I missed you say, missed you saying this, are you anticipating instituting it in the fall, following?
We would have to.
We would have to?
Yes.
They're not going to give us a year, maybe, of piloting a program?
No.
That's disgust, that's wrong.
So...
That's plain wrong.
Part of the legislation that just was passed this spring gave districts this year as an opportunity to pilot things that they might have wanted to pilot.
Right.
Which was difficult to do, obviously, when you were waiting on whether your own curriculum was going to be approved or not. So, you know, as, as I said, what we do have going for us, if we are in the situation in which our waiver is not approved, is we have, you know, six to eight months, which is a lot more time that we had to do the waiver in the first place, to really look at how to purposefully and thoughtfully insert the program that we settled on into the curriculum, because it's not that we have to throw our entire curriculum out for the purposes of this program. We will engage the program into our curriculum in a meaningful, foundational way, if necessary, and we have time to do that with our curriculum writers, with Mrs. Buchary, with our consultants, so that we can ensure continuity of instruction for our kids in the best way possible.
Now, I know you've had the samples of each company's programs.
We did, yep.
I neglected, I did not look at them, I've looked at them for too many years. Would you say that they are comparable, or they, or some of them really different from other ones?
So they are different.
They are.
There is no doubt. And, and you know, when we looked at them, there were six that we looked at, there were definitely ones, they separated themselves in terms of what our students need and what we felt would be a good fit for our kids and our staff and our school system. So, you know, what we will wait is, is on definitive information from the state in terms of anything else that might be added, which would make us need to reconvene our committee to look at any new materials that the state proposes through this waiver process, because we're hearing a few things that some programs might be added. So, you know, time will tell on that. I really do expect by the holiday break to have every piece of information from the state necessary in order for us to have a real solid plan moving forward.
They said at the Cabe December 1st, correct?
They did, they said that in our interviews, and that's Friday, so...
Yeah, and it's funny, I sat next to a principal who has been, who is piloting one of the programs, I don't know if that was just their...
Yeah, I mean, they could have, and, and I'm going to be really honest.
I don't know how many...
There is no perfect program, so there are things we liked, and there were things that we did not like. There were things that we could say, yep, this absolutely fits with what we feel is in the best interest of our students, and then, you know, some things that we might not want to, you know, engage with. So, you know, we'll, we'll take it one step at a time, and hopefully, keep your fingers crossed and your toes crossed. That Friday, we get good news. Dr. Reed?
So, if we get the yes on the waiver, can you just remind me, was that like a permanent of, yes, your program is fine, move forward, or is that waiver a certain amount of time? Is that, is that like a time thing, like you get a waiver for a year, and then?
It is not my sense that it's, there's a time limit on it. This is our curriculum, and so I have not heard of having to go through this process again, so, gosh, you just like made fear run through me. But it is, you know, as far as I know, it's for the long haul.
If we didn't get the waiver, would they tell us what pieces did not meet their standard, and could we appeal or reapply?
It is not my understanding there's appeal process, and I have no idea what kind of feedback we'll get. So my understanding of the process, it is, it is the commissioner and the Dr. Hickey, and the consulting firm gives their recommendation, but ultimately, it's the state that has the final say. Correct. I don't think the State Board of Ed is involved in that.
Any other questions?
Thank you, I'll let you know Friday.
Exciting to come after that, right, Mrs. Turner?
Absolutely. So I just have a quick update, information to share, so on Wednesday, we're really excited to have Chris Heron come and speak to our students in the morning, so we're going to have all of our middle-school and high-school students over at the Oakdale for about an hour and a half, Wednesday morning, and then Wednesday evening at Mark T. Sheehan, we have a presentation for the community. We've invited surrounding communities as well, as well as all of our parents, and that presentation is really, prevention starts at home and with the community as a whole. So just, how can we support our youngsters in making good decisions and leading healthy lifestyles? So, spread the word, hopefully, we have a lot of people come Wednesday evening.
Thank you. We will spread the word that all of our middle-school and high-school students have a field trip on Wednesday. Extracurricular, out-of-the-building field trip. I don't see any questions for Mrs. Turner. Okay, moving on to announcements, item 16 on our agenda this evening, our next meeting for Instructional Committee will be Monday, December 4th at 6:00 PM via Google Meet. On December 11th, we will have our Operations Committee meeting, also at 6:00 PM on Google Meet, and our next regularly-scheduled full Board of Education meeting will be Monday, December 18th at 6:30 PM here at Robert F. Prese Town Council Chambers. If I don't see any other comments or questions, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and have a good evening.